Go forward. We stand for what was sometimes called a little leak.
Yeah.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, please.
Mrs. Spring, here. Mr. Brennan.
Here.
Mr. Segler.
Here.
Mr. Francis.
Here.
Mr. Hippo. Mr. Hooper.
Here.
Mrs. Erwin Adams.
Here.
Mr. Johnston.
Here.
Mr. Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Hippo is here to be a phone.
All right, we had an executive session and I'm always careful remembering what we just talked about. Personnel. Taxes, real estate, check else. Okay, so we'll go on to hearing from citizens. Is there a special presentation? Oh, do you have a special?
I don't have a special presentation, but I do want to take a moment and she'll introduce herself a little bit more in detail. But we have our new student representative here tonight, Raquel Dunio. So she will, we just want to welcome her and she'll give you a little background when she gives her report this evening.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing from citizens. Citizens have five minutes to speak, but any of the agenda, you simply step up to the mic, your full name, your address, you have to be in the school district. And anybody wants to do that, does it? Step up. All right, so again.
Yep, my name is Dan Casey. Four seventeen North Trump Avenue, Pennsylvania. Yeah, I have, all my questions are going to be open questions. Now, there was a very important meeting Thursday night here, very important, very informative. But my question is, there was only five board members. Now, in a meeting like that, being an informant, if that's what's in everything. Is there protocol for the number of board meeting members to be here?
Well, that was, they had, that was facilities. And that, as stated by Mr. Cruz, the committee decided that that, all those presentations needed to be made to the full board. And that meeting will be next Thursday, it's been advertised as of today. Next Thursday, we will have a committee of the whole at seven o'clock to make those same presentations to the entire board.
Then it'd be a week from?
A week from Thursday, right, it'll be the twenty ninth.
It's the last Thursday of the month?
Yes.
Okay. My other question is, what's the situation with this charter school, cyber school? What benefit in the financial gain, if there's any, or cost? But there's been some noise about it in the news or the paper?
Depending on what happens with the charter school funding legislation, which is a primary issue that we have. If, if. Okay, depending, it could represent, if they do pass legislation and they restructure, it could, it could potentially mean a million dollars or a million and a half in savings to the district.
Okay, now, there was some noise last year about the kindergarten program, what, I haven't heard any press or anything, or any, anything since then. There was something mentioned about the kindergarten program.
Well, if you're talking about cyber, we have extended our cyber program to include elementary school. And we've put that in place for this fall.
Now, this is kindergarten, now, this is a.
You're talking specifically kindergarten, am I missing something, Rich?
No, we, right now, we don't have any kinders enrolled, but it, we're trying to do three from, three to six. But if we have in the primary grade, then students will roll, we will accept them. But right now, we don't have any kindergarten students.
So now kindergarten won't be included, like in cyber and?
They will, if we have that, if a parent chooses to enroll them. But right now, there hasn't been any interest in the kindergarten student.
So the kindergarten program isn't going to go away, though?
No, no.
The potential, the potential will be there to offer that service. I mean, we will have a full service cyber program from K through twelve. But as of right now, we will have no, no K one two enrolled, correct, Rich?
As of now, yes.
Then what is the situation with the Altoona Land Bank in the school district? Has there been any, has there been any movement on it, any decision, or?
The board approved participating in the land bank in June. Now, it's been sent back to the, that agreement has been sent back to the city and to the county, so that Mayor Pacifico can finish the process.
So the school board is on board with it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to step up? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the resolution. And I don't have the resolution in front of me.
Just the point where Mr. Slesker, did we have something on the table? Did we have, did we table something last week? Shouldn't that have been dealt with first?
It's on the agenda.
That it was tabled?
You're talking about the equipment?
That was, that was tabled.
The equipment was tabled, it's on the agenda, I mean, the business.
So shouldn't that have been up the table first?
Do you need it? Do you need a copy?
He had, he could.
He can restructure it.
I'm just saying, normally, I thought the table writing would be.
I'm not sure they put that on early in the agenda. It's not the end of the world, but I understand what you're talking about. It should be one of the first matters of business.
That. That's all right.
I didn't even, Mr. Francis, I didn't even remember to retain that.
Yeah, yeah. I'm seventy-one, I did.
I'm sixty-four, I did.
That's fine.
All right, so we'll go ahead with the resolution. Whereas on October tenth, or October, I'm so sorry. Whereas on August tenth, twenty nineteen, that claimed the life of Peter R. Greer. And whereas he served the Altoona Area School District, it has a special education made since August twenty eighteen, August eighteenth, twenty fourteen. And whereas his character compassion and commitment to students has enhanced the quality of our education programs and mission. And now therefore, it be resolved that the Board of School Directors of the Altoona Area School District of Altoona, Pennsylvania, at the regular meeting held August nineteenth, twenty nineteen duly notes the death of Peter R. Greer with deep regret and hereby extends sincere and heartfelt sympathy to his bereaved family and further directs that a duly executed copy of this resolution be recorded in the official minutes and a copy delivered to his family. I just want to point out, I never got to meet him, but it's interesting, whenever you read the obituary and you see at the bottom where it says, he referred to himself as Peter the greeter, because as soon as I read that, I knew exactly who the guy was. Because people knew who Peter the greeter was. So we certainly express our condolences to his family. And we'll move on to board reports. Superintendent, your board, please.
Okay, we are getting ready, Wednesday is the first day for teachers. A lot of teachers have been in preparing their classrooms here in my blog. Likewise, the first day of school for students is next Monday. So we're really looking forward to getting ground running with our kids and having a really productive school year. There is one item I'd like to discuss tonight. It is flexible instructional snow days. This was a fit.
Flexible?
Flexible instructional days as per Pennsylvania Department of Education. We are working on the application and our plan is to apply for the ability to do these flexible instructional days. But there are many issues with the specifics and the whether we will be able to effectively deliver the flexible instructional days based on the parameters as set forth by the, by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. We have many concerns about any kind of special services that needed to be provided for special education students. The ability to handle the student county measures dictated by the state, or is it also another challenge? And there are just several items that, are we able to meet the requirements? We can fill out the application, we may be approved. But the reality is whether we can deliver it without having, without incurring significant additional costs is a question we're just not going to be able to answer in the next two weeks. So we're going to go through the process, knowing that once we apply, we're just getting started with, can we really do this? So, and I know there was an interest from board members for us to pursue this, especially after last year's winter of extended snows. But the reality is, if the cost to do it is just exorbitant, from the standpoint of how do we deliver it? How do we make sure that all of our special needs children are handled appropriately? And how all of our other, other issues are taken care of? It just might not be an effective way to deliver instruction for us at this time. But we are working on the, on the application process and we're, we are working through the, the expectations of the Pennsylvania Department of Education. So we're working to move towards it, but even if, even when we apply, if we are accepted, that does not mean that we will be able to carry it out. Because there's just a whole bunch of other things that we have to totally investigate from a cost standpoint and the deliverability.
There are other districts still in progress, right? Right, and I'm sure there's that.
No one's gotten approved yet. There are, there are districts that have done it in the pilot, but they're primarily suburban districts who aren't facing some of the things that we deal with, with some of our special populations. I mean, literally, am I, am I wrong, Michelle, if I state that, that we're going to have, there are certain services that we're required to deliver, even though the child would be at home? So we may need to send a nurse to the house. We may need to, we may, may need to provide certain kinds of supports, et cetera, which are just fiscally impossible for us to deliver. And then we may become legally bound for, for other aspects because we can't deliver those services. So we've got to take a good, hard look at what we can and cannot do. Also, the law states that we need to exhaust in these three snow days before we use a flexible instruction day. So we're looking at all the pieces and we're, and we're, we're very diligently going after the process. But we know now that a couple of the school districts in the county are, we just can't go there because they can't deliver services. We just haven't been able to superintend this, then everybody's kind of in the same boat, we're trying to get the applications done. That doesn't mean we're going to be able to do it because of, because of all the expectations. I mean, literally, we have a one-to-one for seven through twelve, but K through six. Well, we're going to have to find a way to have the kids literally be, role be taken. And you can use their assignments, if they complete their assignments, they can certainly be in school. There's different ways around that. But then you look at the next thing, which is our extended services that we deliver to kids every day. It's, it's just not, this, this not is kind of dry saying, we're going to give, we're going to set up an assignment so they can do it at home.
What, I just, if there's a snow day, then there's nothing, nothing to do, correct?
Right.
So if we have the cyber day, we have to go on a monitor.
Well, the snow day, we may come up.
Yeah.
But the cyber day, we're replacing that snow day with a cyber instructional, instructional day. But we have a lot of kids who receive direct services, either through, either medical services through access or other, other means. Literally, there's a school in York, I was, I don't know which one, they actually delivered lunches to children. Okay? And that might be okay if you have four or five percent free and reduced lunch, you might be able to pull that off. But we're at sixty-two percent free and reduced lunch. That means we're sending four thousand lunches home.
That's state mandated, as well.
There's, there's a whole bunch of aspects we have to, we have to work through, yes. But if the PDE regulations are oppressive, would that be a good word?
It's exhausting.
It's exhausting. So we are, we are, we are going to attack it full-heartedly to just to, so hopefully, we're capable of doing it. But as of right now, I mean, we still haven't gotten the full legal answer back as to how we're going to end all of our special ed children. So it's, I'm just being truthful to the board group, we're doing everything we can to get approval. But even though on approval, we're going to say we can deliver A, B, C, and D. A, B, C, and D may have a price tag that makes it uneconomical to proceed.
Could I just say, the full legal answer isn't sitting with me. It's a much bigger issue. So when you look at the diversity or the expansiveness of your programs, you have to look at, what do we have? We have multi-handicapped kids. We have kids with autism, verbal behavior program. We have life skills children. How are you going to provide those services with one-on, one-on-one instructors and one-on-one SEAs? You're not going to be able to do it. So at the end of the day, the IP says you have to do it, so that means you're going to have to do it another time. And that's going to mean some other time, and you're going to have to pay people to be with them. I'm just saying, if you don't provide the services, you could expose yourself to content claims. I'm just putting it out there, I mean, there's a couple of schools that I just said, unless you can able to figure this out, how you're going to do it, I don't know how you're going to provide nursing services. I, I, I just don't know how you're going to get around all those loops. Just because one school did it somewhere else, and they might be a small rural school that might have kids far and down somewhere else and not providing the services. It may not be accomplished in a school with a population of, you know, twenty-one percent with X amount of kids receiving services. How are you going to get nursing services? How are you going to provide nursing services to the other school, private school? How are you going to deal with the lunch issues? What are you going to do that with the employees that then have to come back after school is over? Are you not going to pay certain groups of people because of the snow day and then they're going to have to come back? I mean, there's all kinds of ramifications, and I know this was addressed at a seminar down in Bedford. And also, there was a group that works with the various intermediate units providing recommendations on technology. They put out an email as well and said, just be cautious, it's the new shiny thing from PDE with not much guidance on how to fully address it. Not sure what your answer is going to align all those pilot programs.
So, I guess, I'd, to me, I'd say faggot, it's not worth it. That's, if that's the initial.
We, I don't know all the answers to that, they're trying to find it out from the pilot folks. But I was asked by Mr. Hatch, like, how many districts of yours were pilots? And I'm like, none, none of them were pilots. You're going to have to look at what they did and see how they get around those corners. And then you're going to have to decide whether it's feasible in your district.
Change that simple.
For, for certain districts which have, which are not, don't have some of the geographic challenges, you know, or don't have some of the diversity challenges that we're faced with. I mean, I worked in a district where they had one percent special ed and three percent free and reduced lunch. They're not going to have a problem making this happen because their populations are so small. But for us, with our numbers, it's a whole other set of challenges which, which, which at this point in time may be beyond our ability to, to, to meet. But we are going through the process and doing our due diligence to make sure that, that we're doing everything we can if we can pull it off and do it. But it might not be feasible.
But if there's a snow day, this student is going to be home. You know, if we don't provide education on that day, the student is going to be home by themselves and we don't have to provide a lunch, nursing services, aides, or anything, so that's.
Correct, but we do, we are required by law to make that day up. When you do it as a cyber or a flexible instructional day, you're having the day, so therefore, you have to deliver all the services you deliver on a normal instructional day. It's a catch twenty-two, to say the least.
To the home, yeah.
That's what we're finding out.
So seventy percent, maybe, depending on your delivery model, you can do part, part, part back stuff, you know, if you have it out, if it's often to be looked at. My biggest concern for a lot of districts are going to be, since the auditors are looking at safety and security, once they roll it out, anybody that does the flexible and service days, I believe are going to be clearly audited by everybody. And I believe you can probably anticipate a special ed component of that particularly, where they're going to say, okay, how many of your special needs kids got the services delivered? And you're probably going to look at that and say, I, I don't know, maybe a couple hundred did, maybe a hundred and fifty. And then you're going to have to make it up because seventy percent or eighty percent got it, the twenty percent didn't. So you're going to have to make it up another time. And then what are you going to do? Are you going to, how are you going to deal with teachers? How are you going to deal with sports staff? Maybe you're going to get another day?
I'll mention the liability aspect. If we try to provide these services and send out people and they get into an accident because we already have a day off for a reason, it's snow. So, yeah, it sounds like a mess.
It, it's a, it's a very, it's a very appealing idea, but in practicality, we're finding it challenging.
Well, I know people always refer to BG and how they do snow days. Now, I don't know, I'm assuming the BG population is very small. But I know people refer to that and say, well, why can't we do that? Well, the sheer numbers say we can't, so.
Well, it's, it's a different format, it's a different population, and you're right in numbers. And likewise, they're not required by law to make a data miss.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the board president's report. And one of my due here, since these bleed into each other, is I'm going to have my board president report packed back with a library report as well. So, there we go. A lot of people ask the question, like, why do we do what we do? And the simple answer, which is a quote from the Career Link ribbon cutting, it was just called, "If we don't do it for ourselves, who will?" So moving into that, we, I attended the, the basics committee, which is done through the Chamber of Commerce. And one of the quotes from that, that meeting was that our labor pool is stretched ridiculously thin. Twelve percent of the jobs need a bachelor's degree or better. And then if you go out and you look onto monster.com, we have nine hundred jobs that are just unfilled in the area. Well, nine hundred plus, just get the search on monster. And the same thing was reflected whenever I talked to the Career Link folks at the ribbon cutting. I sat with them for a little bit after everybody had left, and we just chatted about that. But there are a whole lot of jobs that are in our community that just aren't going filled because they don't have people with the necessary criteria. So as a school district, what can we do? As a community, what can we do? And that's what we're trying to do, is get our kids' current education and get our kids equipped to take and go out into the business world and pick up a job right out of the gate like they used to. Not everybody wants to go to college, not everybody should go to college. Some people should. And everybody's different, but everybody should also have an opportunity. So that being said, whenever, let's see here, we, there was the ribbon cutting for the Career Link at the library. And that was August fifteenth. And at it, it was really interesting. There was like, there was a who's who of people there. We had Louis Schmidt there, we had Matt Pacifico there, we had two, we had J.D. Ward, we had two of the commissioners there, we had one former commissioner there. But also, interestingly enough, we had the deputy, deputy secretary for workforce development, Eileen Sepriani. We had the deputy secretary for safety and labor, Jennifer Barrier. And we also had the deputy, deputy secretary of education and commissioner of library, Grace One Miller. And all of those people spoke highly of what we're doing. We're the second library in the area, in the state, I believe, to actually have a Career Link in the library. And with us, it's even more interesting because our library is right next to our school. So it creates opportunities for our CTC to have students just immediately go over to the Career Link and get involved. It creates opportunities for our kids in high school, if they need a job, to just go over to the Career Link. Whereas accessibility to the Career Link prior was you had to catch three different buses, if you didn't have a car, to go up there where Shershake used to be, to get into that building. So it creates benefits for our community people to find jobs and it puts them close to schools so that they would have opportunities to educate themselves better, so they could be in those jobs. And a point to note, our Pennsylvania Department of Labor is actually going to Boston to a national convention for labor and economy to present there. And it's how we're fixing our labor and industry and economy issues in Pennsylvania. So there we are, Pennsylvania, on a national scale saying, look, this is what we're going to try to re-educate our workforce because some of the jobs that used to exist for many, many years just aren't there, or they completely changed into something else. So we're trying to adapt to that as a state. And that's a very important note, and we had so many people there who were showing their support for what we're trying to accomplish by bringing the Career Link into the library. It wasn't any minor little thing, it was a big deal to these folks. And I stood by and talked to them afterwards, and we're supposed to get a tour of the new facility for J.D. Ward. We have to do that. All right. Okay, so moving on to the last portion of the library. In that Career Link, it mentioned that the library traffic was increased by two thousand people, which is again, a big deal. And on top of that, Congressman Joyce came to the library and donated a stack of books from the Library of Congress. He said that essentially, they go down to one book and Congressman can apply. And it actually is a process that he went through to get us these books, where you apply and they give you extra books. And those books get introduced into our library. And the fun part of it was, they're all stamped from the Library of Congress. So somebody goes and they pull up one of those books, they look at it and say, ah, it was actually from the Library of Congress, that's a big deal. And it has the little plaque written in it from, you know, donated by Congressman Joyce and so forth. So there was a lot of excitement around that, there was, you know, some parents and kids who were there to donate to that, or the likes. But the whole point of all this is, there's a lot of stuff going on in the community. Not everybody sees it, not everybody understands what's going on. But it's all aimed at trying to help rebuild our community and trying to help establish ourselves so that our students are people who, and our, our, you know, citizens of our community are people that people seek for filling these particular jobs, you know, these cutting-edge jobs. We want our people to be in there and we want to use that to bring businesses back into our community. So, that's all I got. And we will move on to the next report. Just a second, I scroll right here. There we go. Central Blair Park, congratulations.
Uh, we could have been the last meeting in front of the camera. The trade market, I hope that everyone was on difficulty there. There had to be some water testing and doing a water pass. Everything is back online, it's running, I believe. But Dave has asked a question regarding insurance, but I know we had already paid a quarter on that. There is insurance in place, but there's a concern about the doubtable and their component. It's almost brought to determine what is worth it or not worth it in terms of back claim. There's also some disparity in interest there. All of this property is up in Altoona. So while we would have stock control interests, it would be as tense of, sort of, of the property and on its property objects. But if that needs to stay online, that's just for the board. That's all to do with our state, I'm telling you.
She does not. Could you go ahead and give us anything to add for athletic as well? We don't have Mr. Ricky here tonight.
I don't have anything. There's been a, the last one either, in terms of the technology, which is sort of on the list. We announced that in September meeting at the last time, so if you're quoting up in the meetings, it's the last thing.
All right, thank you.
What does it say?
Yeah, just like.
Usually during the season, you would probably do an apartment ruin.
First, that to the season tickets, price for pricing of the season tickets. Not my knowledge, but somebody said that people were charged for six games, maybe five.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
There was a misprint in the paper on the ad. We only actually got five of them.
We only actually got five home games instead of six, and they were charging six home games for thirty dollars. It should've been five for twenty-five dollars.
So, he, he saw I got a call on that, and I said, I thought Phil would be here, I wanted to ask Phil.
But you are correct, Mr. Francis, yes.
Did you refund the people?
I believe that they were taking care of that because we had officers going out, because the sales were out of Mansion Park with all the money out there. So, that's how it became known to myself and the officers, so they were refunding people's money.
I just want to remind you, right, please use your mics because we have someone on, um, help them on a little bit.
This Friday.
This Friday.
This Friday at Paul Edger.
All right. Wayne, I'm not sure if you heard that or not, but that was basically, um, some folks were overcharged on the season tickets because there were five home games instead of six. And that's being corrected on the sitting, right?
Yeah, I, I will ask Phil that tomorrow morning. I'll get an answer out to the board regarding that.
What did? Mr. Rikio said that there was an ad in the paper that was five dollars off. It was corrected. It impacted about six customers, and maybe it gets corrected by the six.
No, six?
According to Mr. Rikio, yes.
Got to make a point. Any, any point?
John, touch on your fact check list.
You're up.
Okay, so education.
Okay, so education, but along with athletics. There are season passes available for sale all this week, I think from ten to two, out at the Mansion Park facility. So, I just wanted to make people aware of that. It's a really good deal for students if they're interested. For education, teachers go back to school on Wednesday. We are having to meet the teacher nights on Wednesday and Thursday. The date, the times were posted on Facebook, I saw. So, and they've, all the parents have been made aware. In addition, there are a plethora of professional learning opportunities for the teachers this week at the start of school. So, we're looking forward to seeing the parents this week and greeting the students next Monday.
Facilities, Mr. Segler.
We met with Kerry Marshall. He said that the, uh, he went over the construction. He said that the newbie building was about three weeks ahead of schedule, but depending on, A is slightly behind. Russ Greaser was there from Strickler McGraw, Stepper McGraw, talking to us about different, three different designs for eighty restaurants at Mansion Park. Dave Albright was there to talk to us about renovation of the ISB building. He said that sixty to seventy percent of the building, they don't even have to touch. The rooms are ready to be moved in. They don't have any renovation, they're even completely full carpeting. Tennis courts, they have a problem with crack. They were supposed to meet on the fifteenth with an engineer and consultant from the USTA and the contractor that did the work to try to figure out what they want to do next. I haven't really heard anything about that yet. The full renovation is done. The Logan softball dugouts are finished. Roof repairs on Penn Lincoln are finished. Testing for lead in the drinking water is done. Mansion Park painting of concession stands, pick-a-boos. Baseball locker room, that's all finished. Edna Roof still has some undiagnosed leaks remaining. And we discussed new storm drain inlet at Logan because the old one was collapsed by some bus traffic. And we discussed tree removal at Mansion Park in the phase two. Also, Ed brought up that maybe we could not have any more facility meetings, a move to the count if it was what the board would like to do.
That's not what I brought up. I didn't want presentations that should go in front of the whole board at the facility meeting.
I mean, you can do your question. I didn't know if you wanted, maybe wanted to take a vote to stand the facility meeting or not. That's up to you.
When was the meeting with, with the tennis court? Is that fifth of September?
May fifteenth.
That still has not occurred yet. The, uh, the gentleman is available next Monday.
Okay, I mean, so it wasn't fifteenth?
No, it was not. That, we were trying for that date, but we couldn't get hold of him.
Yeah. How much is, how much is the ISB renovation?
Well, first, he's gonna present that on Thursday, the twenty-sixth, twenty-ninth. The quote that he gave us was probably nine hundred and fifty thousand. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it was at least, it was that.
So, a lot of money dollars for thirty percent of the building?
It, the biggest, the big issues with ISB is the, is the heating, the heating and cooling in the roof. And then we have, then there are, you know, the creation of tax office slash registration area is the, and then alterations to the party. But as, as per your request, we're presenting this entire, the entire project presented by Dave Albright at the count next Thursday.
Um, at the end of that meeting, there was a comment about we're getting water into the third floor again. Was that, did you guys figure that out? Is that being taken care of?
The third floor of which building?
Uh, he said it was the third floor of this building that we're getting water into the classrooms. Did you get it under control?
Just to, just to review, when we were in a facilities committee meeting last Thursday, there was the downpour, and we actually had water again shooting up out of the drain in the uniform, van uniform storage area over here. And there are, um, there are areas up on the third floor where it did come in and also came into the auxiliary gym. We think the auxiliary gym may be through the louvers on Sixth Avenue, the air intake louvers. But the third floor is one of those sporadic, intermittent leaks that we have not been able to diagnose for trying for years, so.
So, they're under control at this point?
Yes.
And did they cause any sort of damage?
No, no.
That committee had a whole meeting in that six o'clock next Thursday?
It will be at seven. Finance will be at six. Finance committee will be at six.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go ahead and, uh, move on to your finance.
We have a meeting coming up, there's nothing.
All right, IU eight?
Uh, since we had a meeting the other day, or we had a meeting at the beginning of the month, the IU eight meeting was at the end of the month, so nothing to report on that. So, I'll move right on to outreach. Uh, hopefully, we can get together. I would like to meet with the students very early in the school year this year to get their thoughts and feelings on the school year, concerns and issues they want to address. And I would also like to meet with the teachers, uh, once again, very early in the school year, and hopefully, we can do that quarterly this year with the teachers. And, uh, also, I'm working on getting together again with first responders, Altona Police, Logan Township State Police, firefighters and so forth. Those are all in the works, and hopefully, we can get those started here from the beginning of the year. That's all for outreach and IU eight.
Thank you. PSBA, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, nothing with this kind of report.
All right, I'm gonna tag on to that. The PSBA Committee for their bylaws met, and there wasn't anything to change, at least at that point. There's another meeting in November, in version, this was over the bone. And we'll go ahead and move on, policy.
Uh, there will be a policy meeting on September the third at ten o'clock in the morning.
Can you?
That's all, thank you.
Okay, I already covered the library. Technology is already covered. All right, Mr. Rikio, you're up. And, um, I'll throw this out there, as I threw out with the last student representative that's here. You actually go into our policies and read about the student representatives. You have a purpose here, other than to just throw out your report and call it a day. If we're discussing things, you have just as much ability as us to ask those questions, just like the superintendent. He's not a voting member, um, and neither are you, obviously. But you do have the ability to ask questions about anything on our agenda or express your point of view from the student's point of view. So, don't hesitate to do that. It's a good thing. You should be doing it, and we definitely should have student opinions because we're not into schools every day. So, he missed off. All right, so have that.
Okay, so I just wanted to, like, say a little bit about myself before I got into the report. So, I'm a senior this year, and I'm in the National Honor Society, and I'm also a student ambassador for the school. I'm involved in our music and our theater programs here. And I'm a president of one of our newer clubs at the school. FCA was approved last year, which is Fellowship of Christian Athletes that we meet weekly and just like have a little bit of ocean and talk about how our sports are going and things like that. And then I'm also the secretary of the senior class. And so, um, current events that are going on, so all the fall sports teams have been meeting and practicing and are preparing for their fall seasons, games coming up and everything. The band has also been practicing, and they will be going to the first game with the football team, which is away. And, um, the fine arts department, which is the music, the band, chorus and orchestra, and also the theater program, they just had a fun night celebration at Mansion Park on the seventeenth, and they just had a little celebration to kick off the year in preparation for their upcoming performances and everything, just to, like, we can have fun. Also, in July, cheerleaders attended A U C A cheer camp, and Altona cheerleaders placed pretty highly in the, like, U C A camp, and many cheerleaders were invited to attend the Citrus Bowl, which is in Florida over New Year's. And then, I believe, five of Altona's cheerleaders were also invited to go to a trip to London to participate in their U C A parade, I think. I think it's a parade over New Year's as well. So, that was like, five select cheerleaders had to audition by doing a certain performance, and they were accepted to go to London. And then upcoming events that, like, deal with the students, there's a reminder to parents that meet the teacher night is Wednesday for the high school from five-thirty to eight, and you can just, you know, the student's schedules and, like, meet their teachers, go through their classes. The sophomore orientation is on Friday at eight AM, and that's where our tenth graders can get their schedules. They can walk through, open their lockers, meet their teachers, and just kind of, like, meet with older students and navigate through the high school. And then our first football game is away at Holidays for this Friday, seven. Tickets go on sale for this game, uh, beginning tomorrow at ten AM. They can, people can go to Mansion and buy tickets for this away game. And then for Student Day, it's August twenty-sixth, and that's basically everything.
Thank you. Ma'am, that's very informative. All right, so we'll go on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Segler. Comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Segler. Item A, financial reports. Go ahead.
I have a question. On May fifteenth, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents, ramp rental for Mansion Park, what did that thing for?
Graduation.
That we didn't have there?
Correct.
So, we had to pay for it anyway?
Yes, we had it. It, it comes in from, I believe, down around Lancaster. We have a company down there that rents them to us, handicap accessibility up to the stage. We had to be prepared for Mansion Park, so you have to get it there in advance. Essentially, he provided the same service, whether we had graduation there or not, so.
Could we build this ramp ourselves and have it here for, I mean, nine hundred and seventeen fifty for a one-day rental that we didn't even use? Seems a bit extreme.
You'd do that?
I mean, I would think our people in-house could do something with that. And my next question is on the Excelsior Hotel in New York. I know we had this conversation before, and I see on the gym payment of two thousand and eight dollars, it says refunded in July, but then there was a May payment of the same amount. So, did we go to the Excelsior, or did we use the rooms that were available at the university for this workshop?
The rooms were all booked at the university when we got registered, so yes, they did use the Excelsior. We had three staff members go this year, and they all stayed in the same room. They, they booked together, the three staff members, but we weren't able to get rooms at the college this year.
But why didn't we book it in enough time to get those rooms? Because you knew last year you were gonna book this. Because I know it came off this conversation. I mean, we've got to have foresight on this stuff and not be spending all of this money on hotel rooms.
We did look, look as far in advance as we knew. It is an application process. So, once the applications are received, um, then it goes through three to four weeks, about a three to four week time period, um, until you hear back whether it, that registration has been accepted or not. So, as soon as we found out that those registrations were accepted, that's when we, we attempted to book and, and had already talked with the college at that point. When they applied, the, the rooms were already booked prior to that, even the application process.
What about the facility across the street? Because they said there were also rooms across the street. People on the website are telling you there are additional rooms available there.
Yeah. There are several places located on the website, Excelsior being one of them, um, that, that we have, have stayed at the last several years, um, when attending. But there was not an opportunity to stay at the college, so we went back to what we had traditionally stayed at. There, there are several places, and we did look at the cost. Because they were staying three people to one room, um, we felt that that was, you know, a, a cost savings.
Do you know, last year when we went, you paid much more for rooms than you did your reading workshops, if far as you, multiple times? I mean, it was just absurd. So, I think we're gonna do these things. We've got to plan in advance and get the rooms as forms because they're a fraction of the cost, and you end up with the same product.
Three people in one room?
They did.
That's, that's, I wouldn't get, that's an insult. No, they should be roomed by themselves. That's an, that's an insult. That's a, that's a, I don't care, that's an insult. They, they should be roomed by themselves and roomed separately.
And they would be. They were on.
Currently, Dave has the floor, and if you want it afterwards, you can have it.
Sometimes, if you're going on any type of conference, you should have room room. Just, just like you get away on a trip, you should have room room.
I'm not disagreeing with you. What I'm saying.
But I know they were on a campus. Correct, campus room?
Yes, yes.
And the one campus, one room, one door room?
No, 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 I'm not saying put three people in one door room. She said a fraction of that.
Oh, Excelsior, they did?
Yes.
It's worse yet.
At the campus, they could have each had their own room for a fraction of what we paid for the Excelsior. That's my point.
The, the cost on the campus, looking for double occupancy, and it's each individual's, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw out under one fifty or one seventy or a ninety. And when you, when you look at double occupancy, basically, it's, it's equal to, it may be slightly less, but it's usually equal to the cost of the hotel. Tripling up, I'll be honest with you, I, prior to coming here, I've never experienced a school district not having a double occupancy rule for any kind of, of long-distance travel regarding, regarding train, that's standard operating procedure to put two in a room. And in this case, with the Excelsior, putting three in a room, yes, it saves us money, but at the same time, these people are going to a lot of joint projects, and they're gonna be together anyways. So, as long as we're not mixing, mixing male, the men and women, it, it, and everyone's agreeable.
That's not the point. Privacy issues. Yeah, I, I mean, that's nice to save money, but get them a little, little off the rocker. I'd wish, move them a little. They're donating their time to go on these conferences. Let's give them a little something to donate their time. They're doing the service for the school district, not themselves. They're doing the service for the school.
I believe I still have the calculation from last year. I can show it to you.
I understand. I understand. But these people are going out on their. But these people are going out on their, not getting paid, going on conferences. They should at least be treated with some dignity, not three to a room.
I'm not, I'm not saying that.
And is it, in my understanding, is right too, that the conference is essentially, I don't know how to say this otherwise, but like, a discount of some sort? Like, they, they give it to you for the bargain basement price, so that we can bring our people there so that they can learn whatever they need to learn? I mean, it's not like they overcharge you for the conference itself?
No, not at all, honestly. For a week long, depending, it's between seven and eight hundred dollars for an entire week. That's a, that's a week long of basically college coursework, all week long, from Monday through Friday. The days run from very early in the morning, seven AM, until four PM. And then, they also offer additional sessions that you can attend. I know all three teams that went and the additional sessions that we sent people to, they were attending those pre-conferences and those evening conferences as well. So, sometimes they went later into the evening as well. Certainly is a connection that we've been able to build in a community that we've been able to build to learn from, even when we're not there any longer. So, it has been a great opportunity.
Right, and I, I just, the reason I was asking that question, and actually, I talked to a buddy yesterday who just bought something online, and what he paid for the object he bought was less by about half, like, it was half the cost of what it cost to ship it. So, in this situation, if we're getting a discount of some sort, or they're trying to deliberately have this conference at a lower price, it's not like a conference where you pay two grand to go to the conference and you're paying, you know, five hundred bucks for your room for one night. It's kind of the flip-flop. So, I think it's important to understand that, that in, in the educational world, places do that. They want people to be educated, and they'll offer those discounted rates. So, I just wanted to make sure that was correct. Thank you.
I have one question. On the credit cards for Brad?
Yes.
Could we just have descriptions in there?
Yes.
From the boats and the Home Depot?
Yep.
Doesn't that like be detailed, like, just some kind of description?
Sure, those items were items for our technology education program that I can provide you with, the specific items. They were hand tools, a lot of the things that we had not had but needed, to help support some of the larger technologies that we've put into, not only this building, but also film, we were like, in my school involved in, absolutely, I can get that to you.
Yeah, I didn't know if you'd, if you'd know the fact.
No.
No.
But thank you, I'll, I'll buy it, absolutely. Any other something?
Yeah. On the train, one in Columbia, is that from Elton to New York City, or Harrisburg to New York City?
Harrisburg.
That's from Harrisburg?
Yeah, they take one of the school bands to Harrisburg, and then from Harrisburg, take the train into the city.
Okay, just, you know, I'm just curious, was that code for business?
Um, it was, but let me double check for you.
Okay.
Thank you for your thoughts. Okay, any other questions on item A?
This isn't that much more of a question. That costs that much more.
Okay.
I agree, I would drive business, I have.
All right, item B, child advocates in Blair County. Comments, questions? Item C, UPS security care for health services? Item D, non-diagnostic MOU? Yes, sir?
Can I come through, do you have a chair room?
Absolutely.
I have a few, there's something to look at, but, but, but I'm not sure, there's something that I don't understand. And I know there are different parts to review, but it's going through, and when it gets issued regarding insurance, they're suddenly going to check their reference agency, it's not defined anywhere. As to responsibility, I guess you can assume that it would lead to, so this thing, I'll take it, was cut and paste together somehow. And so, if you look, continue paragraph, it's just, it's amazing that I can find, came up as paragraph nine, under insurance. But then, I actually read through those next paragraphs, paragraph eleven, grid from ten. And they're using a reason to get there. And I, if I missed it, I don't be able to define it above. So, whether the car was, perhaps, a lot of time, this help doesn't make sense on the screen.
All right, wait, I'll, I'll take a look at that again. It does look like it's cut and paste, I get a lot of, it might have one, three, five, nine, twelve, and you wonder where they got it. I don't question the pagination on some of their paragraphs. I'll take a look at the agency item again tomorrow. I've already weighed in with Camilla or Susan or somebody, but I'll take a look at the agency piece of.
The, the number of employees, the, the, the list, Phil. I just want to make, especially because of the insurance, make sure that was very clear, I think, that.
Okay. Next one.
All right, so is that something, for your review, do we have the vulgar way of deleting it, or?
Yeah, you can just approve the subject, this is a sort of.
Okay. All right, um, let's see here, we went to D, so E, practice and launch programs. Item F, I don't even know how to say that, N A F M E, National End Service Conference. Item G, approval of ASG prosecution hearing representatives. Item H, repository bits. Item I, A D P Y agreements. Item J, volunteers. Item K, San Francis Cooperative Agreement. L, Mount Louis's Cooperative Agreement. M, Red Cross Survey. N, SDA drivers. O, LPN RN contracted services. And P, RN addendum with previous. Any final comments or questions? Okay, on the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we'll move on to new business. We have a capital reserve list of payments, do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Thank you, Mr. Seigler. Comments or questions?
The network infrastructure from which computer, what is that for exactly?
Can you get a mic for that price? That way, Mr. Hippo can hear too.
This would be the payment for all the infrastructure that we could have improved prior on the, it was the bid that was awarded through E-Rate, so that's the payment of that.
Is that for the new building?
Yes, yes.
All of the new buildings?
The new building and the renovation of the A building. So, that's all of the networking, the wireless access points, all the switches that go in all those closets, all of that work.
And that's the stuff, though, where essentially, we chose not to replace out of this building?
That is correct.
Yeah.
And that's the money that should have come out of the line where we forgot the capital reserve?
There was a budget for the building project, and they did not include that, because it was coming out of the normal budget. Any other comments or questions about the capital reserve payments? Okay, can I have a roll call now, please?
Mrs. Green, no. Mr. Seigler?
Yes.
Mr. Francis? Mr. Hippo?
Wait.
She needs to, like, talk to your.
I, I am, it's not, I.
No, no, it's not.
Mr. Hippo?
Mr. Hippo?
Can you hear me? Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
No.
Mr. Cruz?
No.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Spiegel.
Did you figure out what was going on with the mic? Because you just went loud all of a sudden. Okay, item B, performance athletics equipment, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Can I have a second?
Second, this actually should have been brought off the table. I think, bring that up there, this was table. So, whoever tables, whoever seconded table, should the motion bring it off the table? Whoever made the motion's table. Second. Now, I'm just, I'm just saying, you can, I'm just.
No, that's, that's, that's fine, so.
That's, that's fine.
What's the process, Mr. Solicitor?
Way Mr. Francis just explained it for all his years as board president. Seriously.
That's fine, still. So, who is, who is the person that tabled it?
I tabled it, my second, so I, I'll make a motion, take it off the table. What do I say?
I'm thinking that. Motion bring it off the table.
The motion, take it off the table.
Then you need a verbal motion.
Yeah, before you can go on, you have to go on, then go.
So, we got to vote the allocation off the table.
Yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
Can I, can I call the two members?
Sure.
The original motion that was on the agenda last month is different than the motion that's on the agenda this month. There's an option one and an option two that's printed, so we're voting on the motion from last. It's all right.
It, it will be up to Mr. Francis, but at the end of the day, once you get it off the table, we'll be able to discuss what is new relative to options two.
Yeah, just to get it off the table, and.
Right, I agree.
Okay, so this is, this is the motion, just to pull it off the table?
Yes.
Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, it's off the table, so we need to do the motion that's currently presented, right? Or, okay, because it includes the second, the new part. Okay, so, and you made that motion, Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Okay, and do we have a second? Oh, you have a second.
Yeah, this, I don't have the, yeah, it's, you know, A, you know, who you want to take. And I don't think we ever discussed what option one.
Option one is a motion.
Option one is a motion.
And then, we can discuss it before you decide.
Okay, refresh our memory on option one, but I don't think it's on yet.
Option one is the, is the purchase of your claim. I got it. String and conditioning.
The first one's essentially what we had last time, the second one is the lease version. So, we need to get one on the table to discuss it. So, which one did you want to put out there, Mr. Hoover? Option one?
Option one.
Okay, so, option one, do we have a second for option one? I'll make the second, we can talk about it. Okay, so, comments or questions on the performance athletics equipment?
Yes, I had one, though. Anybody correct fundraising for this?
That was a discussion that was probably the primary discussion that we had last time. What was described to us was that we've gone out with several types of, let me fix that. There, we've gone out with several different sponsorship opportunities with people, and this was one of them. And apparently, we had some folks that may or may not be interested, and we were following up with that particular process. But what we were told last time was, the process takes quite a while to actually go through. So, essentially, what we were being asked was to go ahead and go through this, since we knew about the equipment from the very beginning, that, and I'm assuming this is the spinning equipment and everything, I mean, is there somebody who could clarify what all equipment is gonna be in that lot?
What I seen from Phil was like a universal machine. Because I was looking at the old weight equipment in the old room, and went up and toured with the new equipment that he wants, and he showed me a picture on his phone, and it was like a universal weight machine. Stations, it's like two different machines. Go ahead, Brad.
I, I actually give a volume of the full listing and numbers of the equipment that would be included, but it's a combination of machines, free weights, and other apparatuses that would be in that room. It's primarily strength and conditioning. The spinning would actually go, we have, we have spin bikes, so that would not be part of this purchase, but there would be, there would be some cardio equipment as well that would be included without the, the entire space. The specifics are part of, are part of all the quotes I can provide you with that, if you like that.
I guess that's, that's part of the issue that a couple of people on the board expressed to me, too, is that we have, I mean, it's the roughly a hundred thousand dollars, and there's, it just says weight equipment, so there's nothing specific, so it's like, you know, if we just approved this as it stands right now, essentially, you could say, okay, here's your bike, and that was a hundred thousand dollar bike. Or, you know, if we actually saw a list where it's like, you know, ten universals, ten bikes, you know, some treadmills, or whatever the case is, I mean, like, that's supposed to be like three to five thousand dollars.
Sure, I can provide you with an item Y's list, I'll provide it to Dr. Preysel, and he can share that with you, unless you, you had it. Sue?
Uh, Sue, thanks.
It's comprised of free weight stations, so there's fourteen premium half-rack plus twelve Olympic bridges, which is the pull-up station. There's lat pulldowns and plates to take care of that, the benches and the holders, the pad holders for that. There's a variety of bars, both the Olympic size and the, what's the other size? There's two different sizes, there's an Olympics, there's two different sizes of the bars. There are fourteen of each of those. There's a women's bar as well, seven of those, some combo plates, the safety squat bars, spring collars to hold all the weights on the bars. There's all the plates, both the Olympic and the elite size of the bars. And there's the adjustable dumbbell sets, fourteen, nine, twelve, twenty-seven of those.
I think we use what we have until we can get a sponsor or drum up the money for it, I was waiting.
How much of this equipment do we already have, except for the fact that we choose?
The equipment that we have on site is in excess of thirty or forty years old. My understanding with discussion with various people is that technology has evolved over the time since we bought it, and that there may be some safety issues related to the existing equipment that we have. And it's just, I'm gonna compare it to computers, and Bryce would probably cringe when I do that, but as the technology evolves in equipment, it's the evolution. And this is the newest equipment that's providing the best experience and the best lifelong training skills, which is the evolution of our, our phys ed program to give us lifelong skills to our kids as far as their health and work and visit skills.
So, you're part of the business office, can we afford this? Being that we're in debt nine million dollars? If you want to tell us how it's a safety issue and all of that, can we afford it?
The motion on the table is to do it as a change order and have the funds be on the capital projects account. And I do believe that we have the funds within that project to. And I do believe that we have the funds within that project to purchase this.
I think we have the funds, but we're going to run out of money. And we're going to need all the funds we have.
You know, there's a time down in Penn State, Maine, they had a football coach. For years and years, they had free weights. Then another football coach come in and said, now we're going to go to Nautilus. Then another football coach come in and said, now we're going back to free weights. So they're using free weights right now. I don't see anything wrong with free weights, so. I would like to see someone a while back go after a distinguished alumni, perhaps a sports figure, and say, hey, we have a thing we've been talking about for a couple of years, naming rights. We'll name this room after you. Donate this equipment, we'll put your picture up, your, your, your name up here. Sometimes all it takes is a phone call. And I don't think these phone calls are being made. And like, I, then it's time to start getting these naming rights and people to, you know, help us out, you know?
Kelly mentioned that last meeting, she's a hundred percent right.
I agree, I said that we could try to get alumni athletes and name it like the Alumni Athletic, you know, or a room or whatever. But I, I think we could do a campaign to raise the funds in order to do it. And I don't know if we have anybody that has stepped up and said they're willing to sponsor it.
Wouldn't we be able to, if this is doable? You always hear of one sponsor. How about in this room, if we would have multiple sponsors?
I said the same thing at the last meeting. I said, what if we got a thousand, you know, a thousand sponsors to give a hundred dollars?
I'll do that, I'll give a hundred bucks right now.
I would, too.
I want to already, I'll give you a hundred bucks right now. Everybody, everybody at this table will say.
You're not included by, hey, how?
Every, every, everybody say, okay, I'll donate a hundred bucks. I'll do it right now.
That far away from.
We can get our little breastplate in there.
No, no, I'm just saying.
To get a little breastplate.
I'll, we'll start the fundraising here, and then we can go out and, you know, ask other people for one.
I mean, I offered to help last time, but I just don't know if I am allowed to do that or, or what the process is. But I'd be willing to reach out to former athletes and ask them for a sponsor.
Can we make a motion to table this again for one more month?
There you go.
Or until, not necessarily one more month, until we can find another way.
Whatever, I'll make a motion to table it one.
Actually, he had his light on first, so we'll jump to this. Does you have a comment or a description or anything like that before we get into that motion?
First of all, if they will put a hundred, I'll put a hundred in.
Well, we're not doing two hundred.
I think we should go by income. So right here's my hundred.
State honor.
Let me see if I have a hundred ones, but I have. Right here's a hundred, I'll start it off, and everybody at this table give at least a hundred. And I, how much we have here, a thousand bucks? And that starts, how's that?
We still give our name a little breastplate.
All I want is that, that room done without the cost of tax, better money, that's all I want.
Yeah, I agree with that. We are in the process and we have, we have an eventual donor. It has not been finished up yet, no, it has not. But we are in the process of, of working through this. And we can't commit this person until, well, quite frankly, they, they're dealing with a health issue until we have a, until we have a positive affirmation. But we are working through the process as we speak.
Well, for my good way.
I need to buy a new handicap band, Dave, if you want to come here. We can start anew right now.
I need fifty bucks, I'll do it.
There you go.
So you're saying you, like, the donor wants us to commit to it before they commit to?
I did not say that. I said we have a donor, or we're working on a donor. And there are, there are a lot of pieces to this puzzle that we just can't jump steps. Just being honest with everyone. I mean, when, when I'm asking, when we're, when we're asking for that kind of support, you can't rush the process. And I'm not going to go any further in detail, because quite frankly, we'd be out of school. But we are working on this, and any assumption that we're not is, is fallacy.
Can I ask for a point of clarification? Kelly alluded to it, and I've thought of it before.
One second.
I've got a question about that, which is, as board members, are we allowed to go out and seek donations for our school district as members of the board?
The answer is yes, but it's not, there's other folks that should be doing this.
Right, I agree, I agree.
I got it, I said, who would that be? Like, who's, say, how people in our?
That's Paula. That's, that's part of what Paula's been working on in the process we've been going through. It's been Paula, Brad, myself, you know, and, and various other professionals in the building as we, as we created these asks.
So let's go ahead and jump to Wayne.
Wayne?
Yeah, I'm not sure where the donation discussion finished up, but if it's been a hundred dollars, I'll kick in a hundred dollars for my repeater bids. I want my flag on a chair, so you can rest on that some direction. But hypothetically, there was a lease and auction. They want to deal our ownership right to the end of that three and five year lease.
Purchase would be ours, to lease to, uh.
To lease to ours, or to the twenty-one dollar at the end, or?
Well, it's, it's, it's a five-year, five-year, five payments of twenty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. So the cost of the lease is approximately thirteen thousand dollars.
Are we tabling this again?
So we'll jump back to Mr. Seigler. Did you want to make a motion to table?
Soon we table, give it more time, soon we can.
If we have a.
Let me ask you a question. Do we table it until the next meeting, or do we table it until we've looked into sponsorship? I mean, it, it's just going to come up at the next meeting again if we table it. And I, I don't know, I mean, I think we need to start to seek sponsorship in the meantime if we have.
So your question is, what is your timeline on the motion to table if you're going to, if you want to table?
For one, I, I wanted to see what we were getting for the money. And I understand you read it off, but, but, you know, I, I need to see it in front of me, go through and see what we're actually getting. And I say tables for the next meeting, and at the next meeting, if things don't work out, you can table it again.
So, um.
Yeah, motion.
That, that's the motion. So is there a second to the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So Mr. Hoover, second?
Second.
So there's no discussion on the motion table? All of those in favor? Actually, no. How about a roll call on motion table?
Mr. Seigler?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Hippo?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Brain?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
I'm going to say no. There were more questions I wanted to ask. I'll see if I can take them up after the fact. So what would happen to the old weight equipment in, in that room?
Can we put the circuit?
The old stuff?
Who are you going to?
Okay.
Well, it's unsafe, but we will be using dumbbells.
Can you please make a note to, in the minutes of why, if the voting, now? Because I think there's a whole lot more that we need to ask about the equipment that's existing.
Josh?
Yes, sir.
I, I think there's a problem on that. We need to get a report, and start the entire board, as to where we stand on the naming rights situation. Because I, I've had a chance to talk about this. I know there are some things in the works. As we ask for more of these questions, and there are questions about the division of board members being the due things. Somehow the board has to have some more information about what's out there and what's pending of the board. Otherwise, we're in the potential of, if we're exactly screwing things up where maybe there's a big ask, big need of a certain company far and above what we're talking about here. And then as an individual board member, so managed, perhaps reaches out, they could affect the screen, the field, others in place, and they go, I think, if this were in the, you know, fraction of what we're comparing. But there's a lot in play here, and I didn't have, I'm, I'm extremely frustrated with this whole naming rights issue, I think that, um. I understand there are some things in the works. But at the same time, and the clock is ticking, the frustration of the board building. It's going to have a couple of things on my job, either a function of documentation as to what we're thinking about, where we're going. And, and it's really not in conditions of priority, that, um, where if we have naming rights plans on a number of facilities, or a number of ideas, um, you know, may, maybe we'd rather have, if that's what he comes to me, is going to consider having a dollar donation on the thing that's out there. Do we want to pursue that instead of chasing down a smaller one? I guess we may be messing that up. I'm just saying, what we're out there is supposed to tell them, I certainly understand shared board's frustration, because this has taken a long time coming. We're over three years since, I asked about it, provided the, uh, the policies. Somehow the entire board can't record to, to, we can't, we have to look back on it. Certainly, I understand how this is going to impact the district and what can really completely could change.
You know, I would say, small donation, big donation, take a little bit of help from us.
Well, I think it's more than that, though. I, I think we have, uh, we have staff here who are trying to do multiple things at once. We have, you know, our, uh, there, there's an entire effort here with our staff trying to do these types of things. But at the same time, I feel like, I feel like some of this stuff is, is potentially running out of the wheelhouse of everybody, you know, whether they have the time to do it or whether they have the expertise to do it. I mean, I know, just, you know, speaking for myself, like, that, that would certainly not be my area of expertise. And what I would do in that situation if I were to came to the world was to go find somebody who, who does these types of sponsorships, or sets them up, rather. Do that specific thing for a living. But then the, the problem that we run into from there is those guys cost money. So we would have to spend money to try to make money, and that's a gamble. So, I mean, unless, of course, we could find other folks to help us out who, you know, they're trying to help the school district, that would be great. But a lot of the times, we have to pay these guys for these types of things to, to set up the whole process, the process for donations, the process for meetings, the process for the asks.
You know, I disagree on that. We have people in place, you just can, just need to get a little shout.
Do we have anybody who is, who is a professional sponsorship facilitator on staff? No, we don't.
We're paying more money than they should be.
Do we, but do we have anybody who does that specific task? And the reason I'm saying it this way wrong is, okay, I'm a computer guy. You know, my, my focus is in software engineering. That doesn't mean it's in network administration. Everybody thinks, oh, he's a computer guy, see, he can do anything with computers. Yeah, there, there's a lot I can do. And, and I can't do networking, but that's not my area of expertise. And that's where all of a sudden, I would certainly defer to somebody like Bryce, who, that's what he does for a living. He specifically does network administration. So I'm not diminishing anybody we have on staff, but a lot of our staff, we have, are, are jack-of-all-trades. Like, they have to do multiple things, and that's cool. But whenever you start digging into the nuts and bolts, there are things that they might miss. And we can't just, we can't just will all these things into being, you know, anywhere that we could will ourselves and be king of the world.
Well, we, we got donations before, private donations before, and the administration did it, all right? And we had a PR person on out, and did it. But mostly from the administration, we had people that went out and actually booked the money. And that's what they did.
We are in the.
We did it before, I don't know what we can do, can't do.
May I?
Yeah.
May I?
Yeah.
We will prepare a report, and we will do some form, formal report. Will probably be a portion of September's count. It will be probably an executive session for confidentiality. But we will walk through the process. And we will, we will bring everyone up to date as to where we are and where we sit. We had a meeting last week with the foundation board, and we're taking the next steps with that. We're, we are continuing to work this process. But I have no qualms of bringing everyone up to speed. And that is, that's as far as I can go at this point.
And then the foundation board would be helping to, to help the schools and the fish.
So, okay. All right, so where we left off?
Capital.
We had just tabled the item B. So move on to item C, capital project, most payments. Do I have a motion, please?
Snowman.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Seigler. Any comments or questions about this? Roll call, please.
Mr. Francis?
No.
Mr. Hippo?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
No.
Mr. Cruz?
No.
Mrs. Brain?
No.
Mr. Seigler?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Spiegel.
Item D, ASD School Board Meetings Recordings. Do I have a motion?
Snowman.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Discussion, comments or questions about this?
If they're parade.
Any others? Okay. I'm just going to ask my first question is, logistically, do we have all our docs in the room to do this? Paul?
Yes, so we tested the YouTube channel, live stream. We'll do the best we can with it. We do have to get a couple more things, equipment-wise, to do it. I've talked to access. The reason the board meetings have not been put on, I know Mr. Cruz was concerned about the delay in doing it. In talking with Mr. Sykes at the end of the school year, little bit of a perfect storm. MLTV was asked to tape the, tape the meetings, which they graciously found kids to do. Couple concerns with that moving forward is the kids that are our MLTV. Mr. Sykes asked them to volunteer to do the meetings. Fortunately, Molly was able to do it. For the most part, it was her that had, had committed to do it. The equipment in MLTV is antiquated. The machines broke down. We had five machines, five Avid machines running. By the end of the year, he had one. Discussion with Dr. Prietal, because Mr. Sykes was feeling pressure because of the amount of year-end things that MLTV covers. They cover the elementary buildings and all the sixth grade recognitions. They cover all the year-end concerts. And they cover all the projects of that, you know, spring musicals, all of that. So year-end for MLTV is pretty, pretty tight, and I think Mr. Hatch could attest to that. Down to one Avid machine, and in order to transfer this disc or this, this card needs to be put through the Avid machine, and we just ran out of time. Not to mention that all the equipment had to be broken down by the end of the year, and it had to be removed. In fact, Mr. Sykes spent many days after the year-end just cleaning it out and breaking it. many days after the year-end just cleaning it out and breaking it down for all the new equipment coming in, which is coming in this, tomorrow, okay, the training starts tomorrow, it is in, so the hope is, moving forward, once the kids come up to speed on the training, Mr. Sykes comes up to speed on the training and the equipment, that that transition will be easier, in the meantime, we did explore the YouTube and doing it live, um, but if you're looking for a professional, um, high-quality, I can't promise what that output's gonna be, we're gonna do it live, we'll stream it right directly from an iPad from here, um, I called Public Access, I've talked with them, they too have had antiquated equipment, the only way we were able to give it to them prior was by disc, they are getting new equipment and being trained on it actually next Wednesday, so they're gonna call me back and let me know, they may be able to take that link or may be able to upload it directly from our YouTube channel and disseminate it or, or project it out through public access, that's where we are with it, so at this point, I asked for two weeks, I know, Mr. Cruz, you asked for a week turnaround, at this point, we're asking for a little leeway at the two-week mark, we'll make our every, every best effort to do that, if all the stars align, we should be fine, so that's basically where we're at with it.
Thank you. Have a question. So, whenever we had Public Access, they were doing some craziness of having to record in digital, transfer to analog, then transfer back to digital before they did anything else, so is the equipment that we're gonna have for broadcasting going to avoid that, and the other question is, are they going to be able to do, since you're doing the live stream, that's a one-long stream, um, if they do decide to just record it, um, is it also gonna be one-long stream so that no elements of the meeting are missed, or is it going to be the day of the chunk it up like they've been doing, which leaves opportunity for pieces of the board meeting to be left out of the video feed?
One of the reasons that we experienced that was because of the up, the upload through the Avid system, um, and because of the equipment, my understanding, and in talking with Public Access, if we're able to do this live stream through YouTube, they should be able to, because they're hoping that they purchased the right extra equipment to do this, or the packages needed to do this, that's their hope, that they'll be able to take it from a live stream and that there would not be any kind of interruption in the, in the, in the stream itself.
Okay, so they'll be recording it the same time they stream it, is the hope?
No.
Oh, okay, so we won't have a copy that there's just gonna be the stream that goes out to YouTube?
Yes, now, we should be able, and that's what we're still playing with and, and testing, we should, there is a way to upload like an MP4 format from YouTube, and if that's the case, then we should be able to, and I talked to Mr. Sykes about that.
So we should be able to archive the YouTube stream, that's what we're working towards.
Yeah, basically, you're downloading it back off of YouTube.
Got it. Okay, and one more thing, too, so, so according to this motion, it currently specifies two weeks in here, but yet we haven't had any sort of conversation about what's reasonable and what's not, so is the two weeks, like you started to say earlier, is, is that unreasonable, or, um, how do you guys see this timeframe that's specified in this?
We, internally, we were just, we were concerned that if the motion is made for a week, then we're tied to that, and if something comes up that's out of our control, um, you know, then, then we're kind of in a bind, so that's why we asked for it to be two weeks, and that should be fine.
So you're confident, that's what I'm asking is, so the two weeks isn't cutting yourselves short?
We're, we're okay with two weeks.
Okay.
I was, I was in City Hall, this is back in the winter, and I ran into a technology man of your, you know, by coincidence, he said, you record this, you give us the disc, and we'll play it for a fee of fifteen, twenty dollars.
They don't charge us.
I was up, I was up there two times to see him.
They don't charge us to play it.
Okay, they don't charge, I'm sure, but.
Yeah.
What do you have in it, is that a disc, that's probably a card.
It's a card, and that was what I said when we had the Avid machines, we had five of them at one point, by the end of the school year, Mr. Sykes was running with one, because all the other machines had broken down, so with all of the extracurricular things going on at this district at the time, the student, student work, those kinds of things were taking precedent.
Okay, um, make it short, citizens, they wanna know what's going on with this building project, a lot of people don't get to pay for, a lot of people, they just have basic cable, they wanna know what's going on in right here, is where they find out what's going on, with film it and put it on TV, and according to City Hall, it could be an hour, it could be a couple hours, I just wanna let you know, they'll do it.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Well, one more question, now, the Avid machinery was pretty much through its useful life, we have replaced that?
Yeah, we're, that's the editing equipment.
Got it.
We have all new computers and software for editing.
So we're ready to move forward with this.
The training starts on Wednesday, tomorrow.
Sorry, one last question.
Sure.
So, um, so is this relying on the students again, or is there gonna be a contingency where if, or in the middle of the summertime, but we don't have any students in place, that we'll have folks who can actually do whatever needs done and prepare for this?
Right now, it's me.
All right, um, okay, so any other comments or questions? Okay, so, um, uh, let's just go ahead, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item E, change orders, uh, do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, go ahead a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Segler, comments or questions? No comments or questions on change orders, all right, um, the, uh, the stormwater system, that one, is that, is that on its way then, like, I mean, like, do we have anything that's going to cause any sort of issues with that taking place?
It isn't started yet, you know, at all.
Then, I mean, we have our cops in the rows.
Yes, that's everything's fine.
Did anyone have something?
Anything?
No, I'm good, I'm good, the, uh, you're not good, you're dealing with all of the judges, they're not just the person behind each other.
The, the third, the third one is an inflated guest of it.
Right, that was the actual real comment.
Yes.
Okay, um, any other comments or questions, go ahead, Susan.
This motion does not include the language to include the approval of Plan Con Part I filing, Mr. Hoover, could you, can I ask that that, I don't have, what the proper procedure is, that that needs to be done so that we can get the refinancing?
Can, can we complete this motion and then have that as a separate motion?
Just, just.
Go back to the people who made the motion, see if they're willing to amend it to include it.
All right.
Give me the wording.
Would you please add the approval of the Plan Con Part I filings as part of this motion?
I would like to include a new Plan Con I filing in my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover.
Actually, a second, had to withdraw for, and then you couldn't put that in there. That's just a great change of that.
All right, so, would you like to second that?
Are we gonna do it the right way?
Okay, you, you can withdraw it, and then we'll let Hoover do himself.
And then I will withdraw my second.
All right.
Good, Hoover. So, yeah, I wanna make my motion with Plan Con included.
Sounds great, would you like to second it?
I will second.
Okay, um, since that's an additional item, we have to open up the public comment, would anybody like to comment about the addition or the filing of Plan Con I, it's part of the Plan Con alphabet soup, which allows for us to get reimbursed money from the state.
Explain it.
All right, so, so essentially, whenever we, we started way back when in the beginning, we filed with the state to say, we're doing a building project, and we would like to have them subsidize part of that, and it's to the tune of around fifteen million dollars, so we went through, we voted on that, and each step of the way, we have to give them a little more information so they can keep tabs on our project, to make sure it's within the boundaries of what they believe is reasonable.
Is that what the contractor's supposed to do?
This is an addition, they require for any change order over a total of.
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand dollars, so any, any change, or any large change order requires the board approval of Plan Con I filing in order to have it included in the reporting document.
Essentially, the state will review this stuff, that's what we do.
But all the change orders are basically come through.
They have also had this same, this same statement was included on the motion for all of us, anything over twenty thousand is sent to the state for review.
So then, you gotta go back to the state with more information.
Quite simply, Susan was on vacation, my secretary made the motion, she forgot to put the extra sentence in, so Susan is asking if the sentence be added.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, no problem, so we have the amended motion, comments or questions? Uh, roll call, please.
Excuse me, I'm.
Yes?
Has anyone ever gone back and talked to several of the head maintenance guys at work here about somebody's change order, if they knew where this pipe was, or this line was, or this select one, has anybody ever done that?
I, I actually love to talk to maintenance guys, because they, they tell me about all the, the little things that we never noticed, but yeah, um, as, as a matter of fact, I had one guy at one point in time, and I mentioned this, I think in the last meeting, tell me, uh, tell me their change orders, and there's stuff that you don't see because you go through, you know, once every fifth hour, you pull it out and look at it, and see if something's different, that's why we're mandated to have an allowance in the contract for change orders, so every person I've talked to in the maintenance has said, well, yeah, they act like a, you know, I should know this stuff, but I don't.
I'm saying the past maintenance guys, used to be the head of maintenance here, I'm sure there's maps somewhere where they put a steam line in, or a water line, or like a pool line, and they went over, yep, right here's where it's at, you know, all ticks the phone pole.
Well, they knew that before they were going to build it, they knew, they had planned that, drive on that.
Yeah, and one of the things I mentioned at the last facilities meeting is, is that, whatever they would put in those lines, sometimes they would make it to the drawings, sometimes they wouldn't, sometimes people would remember, sometimes they wouldn't, and that's how we ended up with that, that water line running over top of an electrical vault, I mean, that, that would've been a train wreck if something gone wrong there, so, yeah, people get asked, but it's just not our group, you know, it's.
Okay.
Yep, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Oh, I shouldn't have done that wrong call, um, Mr. Francis, Mrs. Bream, Mr. Cruz, Mr. Johnston, all loaded up, please, and Mr. Hippo did say yes over here.
I did.
You good, Camilla?
Yeah.
All right, okay, item F, personnel items, do I have a motion, please?
May I, first, the administration graciously asked if you can put personnel items F and personnel items G together.
Sounds good to me, do we have that motion?
I'm gonna move that along with F and G.
Okay, so items F and G, go ahead a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Francis, um, comments or questions?
Since we're in a financial situation, I think some of the volunteers should just donate their time instead of be paid for, the coaches.
Well, the coaches don't pay like this, you know, like, for five years.
We do have a series of paid coaches and non-paid coaches, um, there were, there was a list that Phil provided, um.
Okay, I worded that wrong, I think some of the people who are being paid should volunteer their time for their kids and save the school money.
I agree.
Okay, so that's noted, and, um, somebody can ask Phil to see if those folks would like to donate their time, in the meantime, we have this on the table, um, any other comments or questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm opposed, I'm not sure that we're doing all the hiring correctly.
Okay, motion carries. Item H, ISP lease agreements, uh, need a motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, second, anybody? And thank you, Mr. Segler, okay, comments or questions about this, could somebody go ahead and explain it?
Quite simply, upon completion of the purchase of the ISP bank, the ISP, the, the actual bank itself would be in the process of building another building, and part of the, part of the agreement of sale is that they'd be able to lease back a portion of the money they will need to use for the, for the, for the, the time in between their building completed and us purchasing the building, this, this acceptance of this lease is, is important to them to be able to meet their FDIC and other federal requirements.
Any other comments or questions?
Is there actually a copy of the lease? I'm not seeing that.
The lease was part of the original, uh, agreement for sale, I believe that the terms of it are four thousand dollars a month until they're able to occupy their own building.
Until no certain date?
The plan is that they will be out of there either by May, but we'll be able to do what we need to do in other parts of the building while they're still there, because they do not need the entire twelve thousand per for the facility.
Is there a final date on the lease so that if they're not out, we can make them move out and get the administration in?
No.
So it could potentially screw up the whole project.
No. What all, what are the parameters of that, probably, so if we don't have an end date in there, are we on the hook somehow, like, definitely, or no?
Well, I don't think they want to continue to spend four thousand dollars a month, we're moving ahead in those pace, and this is something that could be worked out through the discussion with Attorney John Urban and the owner of the ISP at this point in time, um, was done on a projected timeframe, to get them out and get us in with a projected date somewhere around May.
Right, correct.
But we're not guaranteed that date, so if they don't have building in place and not in trouble with the FDIC, we have no way to force them out.
Correct, but we will not need to force them out, because the structures are there, we will be able to, we'll be able to move in two, approximately two-thirds of the business office prior to them exiting the building, so we will be able to do the rentals that we need to do, and the corrections and the updates that we need to make to the building while they're still there, um, this is just the nature of purchasing a facility that was, that is bank property that's, that is subject to government regulation.
Now, there, there is no lease that I know of that doesn't have an end date in.
The problem is, if they run into a problem with their new building, it becomes our problem then.
Right.
Because we can't do what we need to do, we don't want their problems become our problems, and you know with buildings, you can run into all kinds of issues, so I think there needs to be an end date.
I'll reach out to Attorney John Urban, outline if they need an end date closer to what was originally projected to make an apartment with them into the, the original sales period, we'll see, we'll see, I'll track that.
I just don't wanna see us on the hook for everybody else's problems.
I don't see how we can vote on this until we have an ending.
Well, part of the original lease was part of the original sales period, it's gonna be another one that's not, it's still gonna go in place, but I, I can say that it wasn't voted on due to a, for need for clarification, that's all I can do. That's all I can do.
We can, we can get the vote to move the process forward so they can do what they need to do. And part of that vote would be contingent on them sending an exit date instead of May 30.
So, should we reintroduce the motion with that date added to it then, to do this correctly?
As long as you ask the person who made the first and the second. Have to make sure that number two is willing to withdraw the motion and say number one is working.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Oh, no, that was Dave.
Oh, that was, yeah, that was Dave. That one, he sort of dropped. I'll withdraw. All right.
I'll withdraw. Now, I have to resubmit with the date of May 31 of 2020, correct?
Correct.
All right. So, that is my new motion.
Would you like to second? All right, thank you, Mr. Francis and Mr. Hoover. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
I'm opposed.
So, we have Mrs. Bream, Mr. Cruz, and Mr. Johnston who are opposed. Any motion carries? All right, item A, PSBA rules and responsibilities presentation. That's me, so I'm just going to add this. I'm asking this, recommending this, or whatever the right wording is for that, that PSBA comes in here for an hour to do a presentation on what our rules and responsibilities are as board members. I think it's become pretty apparent in some areas that we don't always necessarily see the line between somebody's administrative duties and our roles as the board. In addition to that, certain levels of conduct are expected among board members. There's all kinds of stuff lined up as far as what we do and how we, you know, present ourselves and essentially in the best interest of the district. So, I think we need clarification on that, and we need to try to, you know, bring a little bit of control over some of the extracurricular activities.
I'm going to carry that as long as we do it after the new board is set in December. Whoever it might be.
That was going to be my comment as well. I don't think we should be spending that money on people who aren't going to be on the board anymore.
Well, the motion. All right, so this is their hour-long version. They do have a workshop, and the workshop could certainly, you know, happen to be, actually take a weekend to do it. But with this particular item, I was requesting that we actually do it as part of a board meeting. That way, we have our folks here who are in the public having an understanding of what our responsibilities are as well. So, it wouldn't be the four-hour-long workshop or their scenarios and Q and A run. It would be simply PSBA coming in, trying to lay these things out, give us an idea of what we're supposed to be doing and what we're not supposed to be doing. That way, everybody's on the page and we can all see that. And quite honestly, it doesn't say this, but the request, I was hoping for the next board meeting, I'd aim to do that so that we're doing it as soon as possible.
Didn't we have somebody come in from PSBA in the virtual board meeting?
Yes, that was, I'm sorry.
And didn't get a very good response.
No, we had, it was the board health, the self-assessment and health evaluation, and three out of nine board members chose not to participate in it. And they still went through with their presentation, and that was at no charge. And they actually encourage all boards to do that, to try to at least gain some level of teamwork. But yes, we did do that. That didn't focus on these particular elements. These elements go back to things like the school code and so forth.
I agree. I, the new board should do this and that. I agree with that. I'm saying, boy, the new board should never say on it, there are too many blank belts right there.
Right now, we don't have a motion on the table, so could I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Can I have a second?
Second. But I also want to say that future board members could show up at that board meeting.
Oh, they certainly could. And this is the, this is the small version. This is the intro. This is to essentially get us through the first half of the school year, because it is half of the school year. I personally am not in the slightest bit comfortable waiting until December because I feel like a lot of things are going on that shouldn't be going on. And I do think that needs to put under control.
For instance?
For instance, we're a board of nine, and that's a quote you like to throw out there a lot. And it's an important quote because we are the ones as a body that direct our, the superintendent to then direct his administration to conduct tasks if we request things. I mean, we can, you know, anything that's in these meetings is open to the public. Like, you could go right to know and find out what's in these meetings and whatnot. And so, we might make reasonable requests like that. Whenever there are requests made that take multiple hours of administrative time, and it may not even be the will of the board to say, okay, well, spend your time on this instead of that. I mean, earlier, we were talking about the jack of all trades. We were talking about how people in our district are trying to do multiple tasks at once. And it's not just limited to administration. We have, we have teachers that have multiple hats as well. And so, these guys are all trying to do their jobs, and all of a sudden, there's a curveball thrown out there. And, you know, as a board, we can then ask the question, okay, Mr. Superintendent, what kind of manpower are you going to have to take away? And is it worth it to find these bits of information or whatever the case is? So, we have the ability as a group to do that, and we should be doing it as a group instead of as individuals because then we run into the same problem we were talking to, talking about with sponsorships where one person might be trying to do one thing, another person's trying to do another, and all of a sudden they collide.
Well, when I got on this board close to eight years ago, I was approached after the first meeting, and I was told someone doesn't like it when you speak up. And I said, I'm going to get used to it because I will continue to speak up and I will continue to question. And I get, and I get a good answer, I'll say thank you.
Right, and that's, that's fine. I mean, that's, we have to question. We set the direction of the school district. That's part of our task is the direction. I mean, that's specifically what's listed. And so, I agree with you. We have to ask questions. At the same time, you have to also decide how we're managing things as well as far as what, you know, our responsibilities are to manage. I mean, we talked about the trees at Mansion Park and everything, and, I mean, we have staff that are responsible for that. So, if they go out there and they see that these, the trees are rotting from the inside out and they need cut down, that's in their wheelhouse. And as a matter of fact, whenever I talked to the one solicitor at PSBA and, you know, tried to kind of go through some scenarios, they said, well, yeah, like, these are basic ABCs and one-two-threes of board responsibilities. So, I just think that it's important for us to understand those.
Well, getting back to the trees at Mansion, there were some bad trees. Why are we saving the bad trees to cut down for last? They should have been cut down first. That's going to cost you a tremendous amount.
They should have never been cut down at all because there was nothing wrong with those trees out there.
David, it's their wheelhouse, and they said there was something wrong with it.
Well, trust me, I know for a fact that somebody told me there was nothing wrong with their trees. They saw the wood, there was nothing wrong with those trees. It was, it was something that ruined Mansion Park. I hope that everybody is satisfied with Mansion Park.
I saw them.
Those gorgeous trees are gone.
I saw them.
Because of these on the tennis court.
And at the facilities committee, we saw pictures to the contrary. We saw holes and actually rips up the middle of the tree.
I'll tell you what.
So, that mean it would have been all of them, but there was certainly now.
The ones that should have went down were the ones by the baseball, the baseball locker room, not the one by the tennis courts, not those trees. Those trees were absolutely gorgeous, and there was nothing wrong to them.
Well, I can't say I'm the expert in trees, so I'm default to what you say.
I'm not either, but people that are told me that it was a bad move to do it. And when people go up to Mansion Park and they see that those gorgeous trees are gone, then they got world stuff. People, people doesn't know about it. Wait till they go out, wait till the first football game. I'm disgusted with it. It's embarrassing.
Well, I think it's PSBA things, it wastes time and money. I know it's, it's going to be nine thirty second at least. I tell them, get out of here, and I don't want a PSBA standing in here at one o'clock. I'm tired.
And that's your decision. If you, if you don't want to hear what our rules and responsibilities are and you feel like we are entitled to do whatever we want, then that's fine.
I've done enough PSBA seminars I don't, don't, can't do.
And the issue that you bring up about someone wasting the administration's time, that is information that should be captured and kept all the time. That, that would be irresponsible not to already have that information gathered. It's not something that's a waste of time, and the person that asked that question was looking for an answer.
I can tell you right now, if I don't do it that way, I'll do it right to now, and it'll still take their time.
Absolutely. And, I mean, maybe you can speak for this. I can't because I don't know what type of software we're using, let alone what reports that software can generate. So, to my understanding, the one that you're referring to took a couple hours of administrative time because they had to piece some things together. Not all software will generate the same reports. So, I don't.
How are you going to extract that information if you don't have works of proof? How? I agree with you.
Mrs. Bream, my point is simply that a request for a piece of information, the one that you're talking about, was made that took a substantial amount of time, and it was able to be made without the board's consent. And that's a concern because what if I just came in here and said, okay, well, you know, how many, how many of our staff have blue shirts that they wear on Fridays? I mean, it is ridiculous, and that's my point. That's my point. My point is that there are lines that we have to establish and things that we have to abide by that clearly some people don't know where that line is, and I think we should all have a clear understanding of where the line is.
You're just trying to shut up a board now?
No, not at all. Not at all. We talk in here all the time. Yeah, absolutely. So, respectfully, that's not what I'm saying.
It is what you're saying.
Can we vote on the motion?
I asked to see the vacation that has been used by administrators, want to know what days are taken, if they're taking their days and being recorded for it. I was told that some people are not, and that would be stealing. So, I feel I'm right as a board member to ask for that information.
And it's not an unreasonable request. I'm saying that there's a process that we go through as a board. We can't individually be sending our administration off.
And if he don't want to answer me, then he should write back and say, I'm not going to answer that.
We as, we as board members can't individually be sending all of our administration off on their own little tasks.
Now, you can bring in your people. I'm going to send out my questions every time.
By all means. Can we have a roll call on this, please? Mr. Hoover called the question.
Mr. Hippo?
Yeah.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
No.
Mr. Cruz?
No.
Mrs. Bream?
No.
Mr. Sagler?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Nope.
Mr. Brennan?
Absolutely.
And three of the people that go to be guests aren't even going to be here after December. Talk about a waste of money.
Item J, AHS security cameras. Doug, motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Go have a second. Thank you, Mr. Sagler. Comments or questions?
So, who are the cameras about, I mean?
All right, can you review this real quick?
Do you have the paperwork with you, Susan?
We're going to get that later. He'll get it later.
Yeah, it's basically the cam, the cameras for both the A and the B building as per the, the engineering and architect's design. So, of course, the contractor's only responsible for the wiring. We had purchased the cameras that are being connected to the system. All of the system that is used to monitor that and store the video, we already own. We purchased that two years ago in anticipation of this project. So, this is just for the actual cameras and the installation of those cameras.
Okay, I'll get it up for you later. Okay, thank you.
Any others? All right, the security cameras, all of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
What? Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, Mr. Cruz is opposed, and the motion carries. Let's see here, any comments or questions on, for information items? Employee union's response, I don't see anyone. Middle management? And solicitor?
Once again, seminar September 25th, we send out to all superintendents, business managers, and other organizations. Our newsletter is going to come out, and one of the things that's going to be included or an update on the things that Mr. Johnston routinely reports on from PSBA. And I'm also going to do a segment on board member trainings, not the PSBA kind of trainings. It's just the ones that are hidden in section 328 of the school code. The only reason I'm going to put that out there is to let all incoming school board members know because there's been a few school districts that got tagged where new board members came on, and nobody really told them what they had to do. And they got tagged by the moderator general's office. So, to prevent that from happening, I'm just going to put it forefront. That way, all superintendents get our newsletters and share it with the school board members so they know. I just thought I was taking all the guesswork out of it. Thank you.
Thanks. Question, adjourned? Well, wait up, got to go more. Football season is coming. Football schedule, football tickets start Friday.
Friday, we play Holliesburg. Contact the athletic director's office. Tickets are on sale at Mansion Park so that it's access for senior citizens is easier than having them have to work through the building. And what else? Your packets, your packets. Your board should have received a sheet of tickets.
It's here.
You just slipped it. All tickets. No, these are yours, watch.
All right. Mr. Hoover.
Says, says Carl Beard on. It's Carl Beard. Well, yours should be there. What's that on your computer, Ron? Okay. There they are, good. But no, the other one, with the, with the ticket says football tickets on there. They were in the board. Thank you, that's all. Thank you.
All right, yeah, well, you're adjourned.
Thanks, boy.